All right. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call to order the Lakewood City Council Budget Study Session on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we have a Zoom as you can tell, and that webinar ID is eight, three, six, two, eight, two, eight, zero, nine, eight. If you're calling in this evening, it's going to be seven, two, zero, seven, zero, seven, two, six, nine, nine. And again, the webinar ID for both Zoom and the phone in is eight, three, six, two, zero, eight, two, eight, zero, nine, eight. You'll press star nine to request to speak and star six to unmute when we get to those portions. With that, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Paul.
Here.
Abel. Counselor Abel, is he on the line?
Do you not think so?
Franks.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Mia Carrero.
Here.
Over.
I do not see him either.
Sharzai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Do not see her either.
Stewart.
Here.
Strom. Mayor Pro Tem Strom, thank you. Vincent.
Here.
Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I want to thank everybody for tuning in. This is the first of two meetings for this evening. We'll follow this up with a LRA session as well. Um, this is the first kind of real public meeting of the budget as uh we engage in this process. That will be a study session this evening as well as two public hearings. And this has also been posted, and it's unique in that we have citizen members of our budget audit committee who will make sure we introduce in a little bit. Then we'll also keep an eye out for Marlon McDaniel if he comes in the attendees. Um, and if he's there right now, feel free to raise your hand and we can bring you over. But this budget process really, I think, starts with staff early on in the year, maybe February or March, and culminates in this beginning session, and then again, two public hearings to adopt it. So without further ado, if you are wanting to follow on, you can go to Lakewoodspeaks.org where you'll find all of this information as well. But I will turn it over to the city's CFO, Holly B. Orkland, and she will take it from here. There she is.
Good morning, everyone. I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. Um, we have a fairly lengthy presentation, but it has a lot of really good information, so hopefully it'll be helpful for you. I'm going to share the presentation. Does everyone see it?
Yep, got it, Holly.
One second. Okay, um, at the beginning of each year, City Council identifies core community values, priorities, and goals through its annual planning process. This budget presentation is a financial reflection of these community values, priorities, and goals. The budget process is a collaborative effort of City Council, Budget and Audit Board, community members, and staff to develop a plan that continues to provide quality programs and services for the community. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the city manager's proposed two thousand and twenty-three revised and two thousand and twenty-four budget. The Budget and Audit Board will be discussing the proposed budget tomorrow night. Then the first public hearing will be October ninth, and the second public hearing will be on October twenty-third. What we'll be covering tonight is the city budget, proposed two thousand and twenty-three revised and two thousand and twenty-four budget, total city budgeting, uh, general capital and Tabor funds, department updates, and questions. You'll be hearing from the Public Works Director, Max Kirschbaum, the Chief of Police, Bill Smith, the Planning Director, Travis Parker, and the Community Resource Director, Kit Newland. So first, we'll start with the city budgeting. Here are some Lakewood statistics that may be of interest to you and to the residents of Lakewood. The yellow circles identify the change from July two thousand and twenty-two to July two thousand and twenty-three. In summary, the income is increasing, rent costs are increasing, and the housing prices have come down some. Even though this is an important um improvement from last year, the twenty-three percent increase for average housing price in two thousand and twenty-two still has a cumulative effect on the disparity between wages and housing costs. We're seeing a minimal population growth um with a moderate increase in residents entering the workforce, which indicates a small shift in the makeup of the population. Uh, commercial vacancy rates increased by thirteen percent last year and ten percent this year. This is primarily driven by the shift of remote work and online shopping. The average monthly commercial rent has decreased two percent due to this shift. For the budget process, we first start with the community priorities and the city council goals. Then we analyze the different parts of the budget, which are estimating revenue, prioritizing expenses, evaluating fund balances, and budgeting by fund. The gathering of the information also includes the input of the Budget and Audit Board, City Council, community members, and staff. Um, thank you to all that were involved in this process. To date, and in particular, a special thank you to the city manager, the department directors, staff, and the budget team, Shane O'Neil, Deborah Dinkle, and Patrick O'Brien. There were many hours dedicated to the budget process to ensure collaboration and effective teamwork to create a budget that is sustainable and is focused on providing quality programs and services for the community. We're now looking forward to the review part of the budget process, where we'll hear questions and input from City Council, residents, and the Budget and Audit Board. Next, we are talking about the proposed two thousand and twenty-three revised and two thousand and twenty-four budget. The total city view will be covered first, and then the general and cap- capital and Tabor funds. Lakewood has seventeen different funds, and they are grouped into five types. The largest fund is the general fund, which can be used for any purpose. Capital project funds, which are primarily for acquisitions or construction and maintenance of capital facilities. The two capital project funds we have are capital improvement and equipment replacement fund. Enterprise funds are government-owned businesses that has have no more than ten percent state or local government funding. Lakewood has the golf course and the three utility funds, sewer, stormwater, and water. Special revenue funds are restricted funds allocating to discrete purposes. Lakewood has the Conservation Trust, economic development, heritage, culture and arts, open space, grants, and Tabor funds. Internal service funds are used to account for costs that are shared or allocated across multiple departments and funds such as medical and medical dental and other insurance-related costs. Next, we'll talk about the revenue by fund type for the total city. The first three bars do actuals, two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-two. Then we have the two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget, the two thousand and twenty-three revised budget, and the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget. The general fund uh fund is the blue bars. American Rescue Plan Act are the red bars. Capital Fund are the green bars. Enterprise Fund are the yellow bars, and Special Revenue are the brown bars. In summary, we have seen an increase in revenue from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one from COVID recovery, and an increase in revenue from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two due to unusual inflation. And then we are um expecting revenue to flatten due to inflation returning to normal levels and a minimal growth in sales and use tax. Additionally, we will continue to see fluctuations in grant revenue based on receiving grant funds. This slide displays how all city funds are spent by department. Public Works is the largest at twenty-eight percent, which is primarily the cost of materials. Police is at nineteen percent, which is primarily people. Community Resources at eighteen percent, which is half people, half materials. Then we have the non-departmental at thirteen percent, which is citywide expenses, planning at ten percent, and all other departments at twelve percent. What is included in all other departments, which is the lime green area, is the mayor, um, council, city manager's office, city clerk, city attorney, finance, HR, IT, and municipal courts. Each individual department and all other is less than four percent of the total spending. This slide reflects the revised changes for the two thousand and twenty-three budget in revenue and expense. For revenue, there's a total increase of thirty-four point one million from the two thousand and twenty-three approved budget to the two thousand and twenty-three revised budget. General revenue is trending ahead of budget by about nine point three million due to inflation. But the primary driver of the increase is grants and intergovernmental revenue. This increase is primarily due to receiving several grants for city projects. For expenses, there is a total increase of fourteen point three million. The North Dry Gulp Project has been shifted to two, two thousand and twenty-four and moved to the Stormwater Fund. There are three primary areas for increase for expense, which are the expense for the Coal Fact Safety Project, land acquisitions from open space and Tabor funds, and site and building improvements at a variety of community resource parks and facilities. The last item, which is uh re-timing of two, two thousand and twenty-two capital projects, is projects that were moved from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three due to resource constraints and supply chain issues. In two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, the city received a total of twenty-one point six million from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds. The city committed an additional nine point one million dollars towards replacing systems or making upgrades to existing systems and facilities. To date, there has been twelve point two million completed with eighteen point five million remaining to be spent. You can see here the list of projects that make up the thirty point seven million commitment. Staffing is assessed and evaluated during the budget process and before any employees hired. As we discussed last year, there was a reset of staff based on how the needs have changed. This year, there's been a little more cleanup on understaffing and adding resources for city council priorities. Based on this assessment for two thousand and twenty-four, the request is to increase full-time headcount by sixteen. Thirteen of those are new employees. Three of the positions would be using existing budget to convert part-time employees to full-time in the Parks and Trails programs. Three of the thirteen are being requested to support sustainability and unhoused activities. There are five, there are also five requests for Public Works, which includes two positions for traffic signals for safety, one for permits, one for fleet, and one for the Google Fiber, Fiber Project. The other positions are one each in PD, Finance, Planning, IT, and Clerk's Office. There is also a request to reduce police agents' headcount by five and convert those positions to other service positions that um expand the civilian services provided by the police, such as behavioral health. The five positions are two community service officers, two mental health co-responders, and front, one front desk position. Chief Smith will discuss the changes during his presentation. All of these requests are for two thousand and twenty-four. There is no new request for two thousand and twenty-three. Planning for the future. Planning for the future is an important part of the city's planning, not just revising the current year and budgeting for the next year. The city currently has several areas on the horizon. City infrastructure investment, affordable housing, unhoused population, sustainability, and the impact of the Tabor limit returning to two thousand and twenty, returning in two thousand and twenty-six, which um all requires funds to address. During two thousand and twenty, while weathering the impact of COVID, it became clear to the city there needed to be more savings for the funds so that uh we can be prepared to pay for these large investments. You will see in the review of the general fund and the capital fund, the city has been successful in saving funds and are now planning for the investments needed. These savings will not pay for all that is needed, but it is enough to begin ma- um many projects. You will hear proposals from the presenters tonight for uh starting some of these projects in two thousand and twenty-four and future years. Now that we have covered the total city review, we're going to talk about uh the general fund. The general fund serves as the city's primary operating fund and accounts for ordinary operations, financed from taxes and general revenue. This slide shows the distribution of general fund revenue by type of revenue for the two thousand and twenty-four budget. Intergovernmental includes state and federal funding. Other includes fine, fines, forfeits, and investment income. This donut gives you a visual display of how much sales and use tax dominates the total revenue for the general fund. Sales and use tax revenue for two thousand and twenty-four are expected to be sixty-eight percent of all general fund revenue. Property tax, nine percent, charges for services, eight percent, franchise fees, five percent, intergovernmental revenue, four percent, and all other, six percent. Next, we'll talk about the sales tax forecast for the city of Lakewood. Throughout the year, we look at the Office of State Planning and Budgeting, the Colorado Legislative Council, and the Federal Reserve Systems Forecast for Consumer Price Index. Utilizing this information and internal trends, staff have estimated six point one percent for two thousand and twenty-three and two point four percent for two thousand and twenty-four sales tax growth. The primary drivers for change for twenty-three to twenty-four is the expectation that inflation is going to come down. In the pie chart on the right, you have a breakout of the top five industries that generate sales tax. Restaurants, retail, services, utilities, household products, and other. On the left side, you'll see the impact in inflation. The city has experienced a seven point six percent year-to-date growth in sales tax. Four point seven is due to inflation, and the rate remaining, two point nine percent, is due to the increased collect, collection of sales tax, but we are seeing inflation starting to come down. This is why for year-to-date, we have seven point six percent, but the forecast I had on the previous page, the six point one, is lower because we're expecting inflation to be coming down. The two pie charts here represent the percentage of sales tax that is generated within the city versus outside of the city. An example of out-of-city means a purchase by someone who resides in Lakewood and is purchasing something online. You can see the shift since two thousand and nineteen. The reason staff started to focus on this is because in two thousand and nineteen, we started to see a trend of in-city revenue starting to decline. We did not see the corresponding increase in out-of-city revenue. With efforts of staff and approval from City Council, the sales tax code was updated in two thousand and twenty-one. The tax code was simplified and made more consistent with the state so that it is easier for businesses to file taxes with the city. The revenue staff are also partnering with the city attorney's office on increasing compliance. This shift from two thousand and twenty, from twenty-seven percent to thirty-six percent in out-of-city sales has been a gradual se- shift since two thousand and twenty-one. This slide gives you an example of property tax for a home valued at six hundred thousand dollars. As you can see, the city gets the smallest portion of this revenue, which is five percent. Of the four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars, the taxpayer would pay in this example, two hundred and twenty-four dollars would go to the city. Now we'll talk about general fund revenue. This graph shows you the two thousand and twenty-two actuals, the two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget, the two thousand and twenty-three revised budget, the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget, and the forecast from twenty-five through twenty-eight. The red bars show the projected Tabor transfer refund amount. Returning to refunding above the Tabor limit will start in two thousand and twenty-six. The orange bar shows the ARPA funds, and the blue bars show what remain in the general fund. As you can see, for the out-years, we are expecting a gradual increase in the general fund revenue. This slide shows the general fund expenses for two thousand and twenty-two actuals, two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget, two thousand and twenty-three revised budget, the two thousand and twenty-four proposed, and the forecast from twenty-five through twenty-eight. The blue bars show the annual operating costs to continue serving um serving continuing services at the current level. The red bar shows the one-time projects and investments from the general fund. These projects are unhoused support services. The North Dry Gulp Project for FUD plane, lead to plane mitigation, which the Stormwater Fund is planning on borrowing from the general fund. This graph shows the general fund balance beginning with two thousand and twenty-two actuals, two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget, two thousand and twenty-three revised budget, the two thousand and twenty-four proposed, and the forecast from twenty-five through twenty-eight. As mentioned earlier, the city has purposefully saved these funds for future investment from two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-three. In two thousand and twenty-four, there's a plan to use fund balance to begin the unhoused service project as well as purchase a new maintenance campus. In two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six, there is a plan to provide an internal loan to the Stormwater Fund uh to comply with the North Dry Gulp Project, complete the full of North Dry Gulp Project. With these capital projects and internal loan, the general fund is projected to still maintain the minimum ten percent reserve. This is just the start of planning for future investment. The department director speaking this evening will touch base on some of these additional investments that will need to be made due to the city's aging infrastructure and new needs. Now shifting to the capital improvement fund. You can see on this slide the capital improvement fund for two thousand and twenty-two actuals through two thousand and twenty-eight forecast for the fund balance. As we have discussed throughout this presentation, there has been um in uh intentional savings up until two thousand and twenty-four to support the investments needed in infrastructure. In two thousand and twenty-four, there is a plan to purchase new land for a new maintenance campus, which I just mentioned, which is estimated to be eight million from the capital improvement fund and seven million from the general fund. Once this takes place, the capital improvement fund will begin to contribute money to the fund balance on an annual basis to support the continued investment needed to support the community. The costs for these investments have not been identified yet, so you do not see the forecast of the expense in the out-years. Next, we'll talk about Tabor, otherwise known as the Taxpayer's Bill of Rights. Tabor is a Colorado constitutional amendment that limits government revenue increases to inflation plus a small growth factor. Here is the calculation. Uh, Consumer Price Index includes common uh common consumer spending items such as fuel, clothing, food, also uh costs, et cetera. CPI plus local growth, which is only new construction, equals the allowable growth or the Tabor limit. Tabor requires two limit calculations, overall revenue and property tax. On average, about seventy percent of the total city revenue are subject to the Tabor limit. In two thousand and seventeen, the voters approved retaining the twelve point five million proposed refund to be used for parklands and open space, infrastructure and transportation, and police needs. These funds have been spent. For the remaining years, a third of the Tabor refunds are allocated to open space, part and parks needs, a third to infrastructure, transportation, and a third to police. The slide shows what was historically refunded and what was transferred to the Tabor fund. Funds above the Tabor limit will start going back uh to the taxpayer as of two thousand and twenty-six, and other fund sources will need to be identified for these programs. You'll notice that the two thousand and twenty transfer is much lower due to the requirements to have two calculations, one on overall revenue and one on property tax. The city of Lakewood did not hit the limit on the overall revenue because of the significantly lower revenue from COVID, but the city did hit the limit on the property tax. In two thousand and twenty-two, there was a ten point six million for the Tabor refund, which was ex- uh expected due to the increase in revenue driven, generated from inflation. You'll see on the next three slides, the Tabor funds are being used for a significant number of projects. On this slide, we have the parkland and open space spending. The focus for this area has primarily been acquisitions and improvements. Hundred and twenty-eight point eight acres have been purchased with almost eight million dollars, and there has been three point two million dollars invested in parks improvements. The cost of maintaining the additional acreage will have to be absorbed by other sources when the Tabor funds have been used up. Ms. Newland will discuss this in her presentation as well. For infrastructure and transportation, the main focus is the sidewalks maintenance and improvement program and traffic signals. Once these funds are used up, the maintenance of these new sidewalks and traffic signals will Once these funds are used up, the maintenance of these new sidewalks and traffic signals will need to have alternative funding. There have been a few projects completed for the police department with the Tabor funds, such as a record management system and police agent health and wellness. Since two thousand twenty one, these funds have primarily been utilized by the body worn camera program. This is made up of physical body cameras, the service to maintain raw data, and the personnel who manage the data and the program. Body worn cameras will be funded by the Tabor fund until the funds are used up, and then another funding source will need to be identified. Another continued focus is the health and wellness assessment of the police agents. Now, four departments will share details on specific projects and initiatives. First, we'll hear from the Public Works Director, Max Kirschbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. Good evening and welcome.
Mayor, good evening, mayor and council, budget audit board, and all those who may be listening. If I could have the next slide, please. With this slide and with the other department heads that will follow me, we will briefly mention the typical goals that each of our departments support with a couple of examples. So for goal number two, Public Works completes projects that would improve multimodal safety and mobility as well as a variety of pavement maintenance programs. Under goal number five, Public Works contributes to municipal code changes for things like emergency sheltering, which you saw on first reading last week, as well as things like building code evaluations and other future solutions for the unhoused population. Under goal number six, there are public infrastructure improvements that occur in private development, as well as the department issues building permits and provides a variety of engineering and inspection services. Slide, please. So from the time we presented for the budget a year ago, I wanted to give you an example of some of the projects that have been completed. There in capital programs, there are a total of thirteen that have been completed. And that accounted for fourteen million dollars in total funding, of which one point three million dollars was in the Tabor fund. The two photos that you happen to see here are both examples where Tabor funds were used. And these are both pedestrian safety projects. Many projects have multiple funding sources, however, but in the, in that large total, one of the areas that accounts for a lot of the funding is street resurfacing and concrete repair that goes along with that. Each year that accounts for about nine million dollars worth of work. Go ahead, the next slide. And this is just another example of a project completed within the last twelve months. This is a traffic signal replacement project that included some pedestrian upgrades that jewel into frame. Slide, please. Thought it'd be helpful to, without focusing on specific dollar amounts in each of these graphs, to give you an idea how private development activity impacts both revenues and expenses. We track certain metrics that across the enterprise. A few that are featured here, if you look in the upper left, you can see when a private development project is completed, we often require certain public improvements to be performed along with that work. Over the last five years, that's accounted for one point two million dollars a year on average in public improvements. In the upper right, you see numbers of permits issued in thousands. Over the last five years, that adds up to about seven thousand five hundred permits issued a year. And that trend looks to continue for our current year, two thousand twenty three. In the bottom chart, you'll see the valuation of new buildings based on permits issued. We can, we calculate what the valuation of that new private construction is, and you can see that it's averaged about three hundred and seventy million dollars per year over the last five years. Slide, please. Now to talk a little bit about projects that have started since the last time we made this budget presentation, but are still underway. We have thirteen projects in design, seven, seven additional projects under construction, again totaling nineteen million dollars, of which four point two million are Tabor projects. In fact, on the design side, nearly all of the thirteen projects that are in design use some amount of Tabor funding. The examples, I'm sorry, that's, that's okay. You know, I was gonna say the examples here are a traffic signal replacement on Alameda at Beet Street, which just got underway very recently, as well as work that is still technically in the design phase for this part of the work. It's the sidewalk from Morrison Road, that intersection, including that intersection and upgrades, and then sidewalks to the south. Go ahead, slide. Let me, before we go to the slide, let me make one additional comment about construction I should have pointed out. On the construction side, these are utility projects, pedestrian walkways, and traffic signals that are underway. And maybe most notably, as it was mentioned by Holly, the North Dry Gulch project is now underway with the first phase of that work, which is on Fourteenth Avenue. And that will be storm sewer improvements between Teller to about Newland Street. Okay. On this slide is a little bit about in the, another one of the capital funds is the Equipment Replacement Fund, where fleet vehicles are purchased and maintained. I think what was, what's important to note here over the, over the last five years, and you'll see a lot of that seems to coincide with COVID, is that we've seen a steady decline over the last four years in the vehicles that we receive, that we attempt to purchase each year. Pre-COVID, it was in, in that range, forty seven, forty eight vehicles received to replace vehicles that would be destined for salvage. And in the most recent period, including two thousand twenty three thus far, only about a third of that number. It's important, though, that we continue to budget for it, for this replacement because with the volatility in the market, we never know when the manufacturers are gonna open the window for purchases of fleet type vehicles, and our fleet managers ready to make those purchases at a moment's notice when those windows open. On the, the other note here is that on the right hand side chart, you'll see there was a little spike in vehicles received for patrol units for the police department. Other than that, the steady decline of vehicles has been across the board, whether they be general purpose vehicles or specialized equipment. On the electric vehicle side, we are making a measured progress toward electrification. At this point in time, we have about ten hybrid or electric vehicles in the fleet. We are also working and we are on track with providing some charging stations at city facilities for city vehicle, city fleet vehicle use. That's in concert with XL as a primary partner, and there is grant funding associated with that, and we're in the very early stages of providing public electric vehicle charging infrastructure at city facilities for any, any user. Next slide, please. In the twenty four budget, similar to our past performance, we have six projects proposed that we will get underway with design in twenty four, and twelve other projects that are highlighted by category here that we would begin construction in two thousand twenty four with the budget. One that I'd like to point out on the construction side in specific would be, and this was note, it is noted in, in the CIPP booklet that was also published for your use, and that is a, a bridge lighting project for the W line bridge over Sixth Avenue. If this budget is approved, we would restart negotiations with RTD on executing and carrying out that project. We have not had those conversations yet. Didn't want to get ahead of the budget. Again, one other item to point out in that, in the total amount is we would expect to expend about nine million dollars again in street resurfacing and concrete work to go with it. Also, most notably, if you look at the major drainage line here at twenty five point seven million dollars, a, the, the vast majority of that is the, would be the next construction phase for the North Dry Gulch project, which Holly mentioned a couple of times in, in financing of that work. Slide, please. As we look forward to the future years beyond two thousand twenty four, we are interested in continuing to pursue a replacement maintenance campus and we are working hard toward the acquisition of land for that in two thousand twenty four. But it would be construction of the facilities themselves in the years beyond that. North Dry Gulch will continue in phases through two thousand twenty seven, and we will maintain a focus on traffic signals, intersections, pavements, sidewalks, shared use paths for multimodal transportation, as well as in the utility funds, we would continue to do repair and upgrade to water and sewer mains, and you've heard me talk about the stormwater system. Also, a little bit different from last year, between then and now, we have made ones, one significant step forward with the, with XL for the possible purchase of streetlights that currently belong to XL. Most streetlights in the city do belong to XL. We have what's called a separation study that is being executed by a subcontractor to XL that would form the basis for discussion and negotiation of the sale of those streetlights to the city. That concludes my remarks for this evening, and I'd like to introduce Police Chief Phil Smith to take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. Good evening, Chief Smith, welcome.
Good evening to you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and anyone else who's listening in. As usual, I always have to get this prerequisite out that I am humbled and honored to be your police chief. And what I plan to do in the next ten minutes is to lay out an ideology or philosophy, which is gonna be the underpinnings going forward of our budget planning and handling the operations in our police department. Next slide, please. So these are the direct goals that the city has put out, and they align with the agent, our agency's goals as well. Goal number one, secure, inclusive, affordable neighborhoods is obviously our goal as well with our community outreach and obviously facilitating traffic and, you know, dealing with anything we have to to make sure the quality of life is maintained. Goal number two, safe and accessible streets that goes to traffic. Obviously, we're all familiar with Wadsworth, and we're, we constantly have to address that. That's a featured attraction as far as traffic. Goal number four, effective, accountable, transparent, and data informed government. This is the way of the world with law enforcement nowadays. These, the siloed, you know, law enforcement in a castle with a moat around it, and you know, we keep to ourselves. It's not the way we do it now. We need participation and cooperation and combined leadership efforts. That's why we team up with the, the city management and our partners in the community. Makes us all a better, better operating system. We have, we take all those inputs and produce a better product. Goal number five, short and long term solutions for the unhoused population. I'm sure most of you are aware that we have a specialty unit here called the CAT team, the Community Action Team, as well as I'll, I'll talk a little later on about the expansion of our coresponders. This is also another thing that's just, you know, a progressive tool that Lakewood has enlisted long before I ever got here, which made Lakewood attractive to me, is the fact that we understand that the law enforcement service is just that, it's service. It's not, it's not all about enforcement. As a matter of fact, enforcement can become a very small portion of the service we provide. We're caretakers, and part of that is our unhoused population. Goal number six, a strong and healthy economy. We're directly responsible for a portion of that because people want to move their businesses, their homes, their families, and go to the schools when you have a safe community, and you think you have a professional organization in the law enforcement field. Next slide, please. So the Lakewood Police, these are just some parameters. The Lakewood Police Department has over four hundred personnel. Currently, two hundred and eighty two sworn. Some of those numbers are gonna change. That's when we're full, two hundred and eighty two, approximately ten thousand activities monthly. July, it was eleven thousand. Current issues, obviously, we have a recruiting and retention issue, which is a nationwide problem. And of course, there's a crime reduction issue, which we full throttle on right now. The good news is, is most of your crime is in one local area, but actually a couple, two, two areas, I guess. This agency has a reputation as being very professional, not only in this in the Denver area, but outside the state of Colorado. And my observations, which is plain, you're progressive service delivery format. It's, it's pretty impressive, and I'm very pleased with it. Legislature, the, the last line is the things that are form hurdles for us to get to where we need to go. So we have to be cognizant of these and be able to work with them. It's, you know, they're not, it's not the end of the day, but we have to be aware of the legislature and the route they go. Surrounding competition, this is a very compact, very forward thinking, professional area, and we're all pooling for the same one percent of the population. The national climate has been a little rough. I almost am remiss, and I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that I've seen four decades of this. I've seen the ups and the downs. I think right now we're heading a little bit up after a significant down. And then, of course, you have police reform, and I don't know if any of you are aware, but my idea of police reform is an adjustment in service delivery. It happens every four or five decades. We're in the process of doing one right now. Next slide, please. Lakewood Police Goals, our goals. We want to reduce calls for service, and we want to expand civilian applications, and these work hand in hand. The, the, when you're talking about staffing in a police department, you're talking about addressing the calls for service and how long it takes those calls to be managed. And what I like to think is that we, some of the duties, we can drop onto civilian personnel, and they can handle some of those hours. Because it is difficult to find more sworn personnel, so you have to find another way to address those hours and the, and the calls for service, and that's one of them is to civilianize some of our amenities for the agency. Obviously, the overall LPD goal or Lakewood Police Department would be any police department is the quality of life, safety, security, and obviously the reduction of crime. And the implementation, how we're going to get there, is we have three main goals that will be in, in operation throughout everything we do. These are the guide rails for what we do. Leadership development, that'll keep your people in the seats. It'll draw our other recruits. Recruitment and retention comes after the leadership development. And obviously, when we're at our staffing numbers or we found a way to address the, the calls for service, we'll be more flexible in our crime reduction and adjusting our vision towards that. Next slide, please. Our guiding principles on short term objectives, we're gonna build relationships, and that's gonna be through transparency, trust, and communication. Like I said, this is the way business is done nowadays. It's the most effective way. Attending to community needs, and we'll get those needs through national events that have happened. We'll see it coming ahead of time by watching what's going on nationally, and obviously our own community issues. We have big ears when it comes to this because once we, we get this input feedback, we can start to fashion our goals and how our operations are gonna be run. Next is attending to personnel needs. This is very simple. It's leadership. You know, inspire, role model, challenge, and it's, it's, and treat them like individuals, obviously. It's, this is how you keep people in the seats. The dictatorships, those, those don't float anymore. those those don't float anymore. Creating entertainment of city and organizational vision. We will always keep our eye on the ball, which is going to be the long term goal. And working with the city lining up, we're not we're not rogue. We are part of the program and we want to we want to achieve the goals that the councils put out there because the council's speaking for the very constituents we serve. Next slide, please. Operational Plan. This is Twenty First Century Policing. There's six pillars to it, and it was originated by Eric Diggle on the behest of President Obama in two thousand and fifteen. And if you look at these these six tenants, they they would seem to be the common sense, but what they are is that we're going to weave around these things every day as part of our fiber. This is what's going to hold our day to day operational plan. We're going to expand our technology. We're going to use social media. That's going to be your recruiting, your training, all that falls into that. Officer Wellness and Safety is a major priority now. Thank God that the law enforcement entities have started to understand that our people, our people and they they're subject to the wear and tear of such the job we do. So that's one of our primary goals to take care of our people. Building transparency, trust and legitimacy. It goes without saying, it's self explanatory. Like they said, those days in the castle with the moat, those don't exist anymore. Crime reduction and community oriented policing. Your crime reduction will happen through engagement and and obviously working in teams with your community, building those relationships with trust, communication, problem solving, all the 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 big P's. And then, of course, officer training and education is constant, and we're a clear agency. We're nationally certified. And this officer training and education is the current best practices that we use and policy and oversight. That's internal. It'll be based on statute, it'll be based on current trends, it will be based on our career. But we'll always have the top pro top policies and procedures in place. Next slide. Thank you, Holly. Strategic Plan. We're gonna, we're actually in the middle of this right now. Some things you don't wait for the long haul. You go right after it. We have targeted saturation patrols, hotspots. And we're utilizing our people inside the building. We're cross training them and doing cross coverage. Different divisions or units are covering other divisions and units. And we're trying to utilize our people as best we can to cover those hours and those calls for service. But a targeted saturation patrol is based on information, data. And we are going to use the oldest the oldest strategy in the book, presence or the illusion of presence. We're going to be right there. And we're going to inhibit people from taking bad acts. Creating efficiencies. This is the use of civilian personnel. I mentioned it before. And I firmly believe that you don't, you do not need a sworn officer to carry out every duty within a police organization. Of course, it's it's the arrest power is obviously where the sworn capability comes in. But there's some very talented people and they want to serve as well. And we're going to enlist those services. We're going to use our civilian population to help cut down those hours and of the calls for service. The staffing model that I like to lean on is the thirty three percent and it's proactive. Well, let me explain this. Thirty three percent is thirty three percent of the calls or hours that your officers are involved in are obligated time, which is taking calls for service. They have to act on those. They have to move on those. The second thirty three percent is administrative. That's training. That's court, that's prep. And that's you have to have that as well. And then there's the thirty three percent of unobligated time, which would be your proactive policing. That's when you're in the neighborhood, you're at the sporting events, you're turning door handles, you're showing up at meetings, you're doing things in a proactive manner. If your proactive number is below thirty three percent, then you have a staffing issue. If your calls for service or your obligated time is above thirty three percent, you have a staffing issue. And the way we're trying to address that again is to get that thirty three percent by having some of that workload taken in by the civilians. Next slide, please. I guess I'm, I guess that's it. I'm gonna, one of our other partners in our leadership team, I'm going to introduce. You know, I wield here Travis Parker, who is
Director of Planning.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thanks, Chief. Nicely done.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excited to be with you tonight and chat a little bit about what's going on with the Planning Department. In terms of our goals, we play a part in goal number one, obviously with secure and inclusive and portable neighborhoods as well. This clearly comes from enforcement of the zoning ordinance, the housing study that you're going to hear a lot about tonight. Goal number three, a beautiful and sustainable city. We have an entire division devoted to sustainability. I'm going to talk a lot about that tonight as well. In terms of goal number five, short and long term solutions for unhoused populations, I'll be talking about our homeless navigators and a lot of the efforts that we're putting into the unhoused population as well. I want to start tonight by talking about sustainability, some of the current projects that we have going on. First, our in two thousand and twenty three, we we ramped up the Residential Water Conservation and Turf Replacement Program. This is incentives for outdoor water conservation and resource. This, in this program, we facilitated over fifty Garden in a Box discounts for residents, twenty lawn lawn replacement discounts, sixty two free irrigation assessments and installed fifteen smart controls and fourteen rain sensors. Another big push in two thousand and twenty three was sustainable development. You're all aware that in two thousand and nineteen, the City Council initiated the Enhanced Development Menu. And then last year, Council really enhanced that menu and added greenhouse gas mitigation, a lot of other factors to it. We've had forty seven projects go through that Enhanced Development Menu, twenty of them through the new regulations enacted last year. And for those that are curious, some of the top project enhancements that have been taken in that Enhanced Development Menu include dark sky outdoor lighting, building electrification, pollinator friendly landscaping, EV charging and hydro zones. And then finally, as always, we put a lot of effort into our Lakewood Sustainable Neighborhoods. In eleven years of the Sustainable Neighborhood Programs, over a thousand projects and workshops and events have taken place in Lakewood neighborhoods. And over ninety four thousand residents have been engaged in different sustainable neighborhood events over eleven years. So it's incredibly successful program. We hope to expand it in two thousand and twenty four with two new neighborhoods. In terms of upcoming initiatives in the coming year, we've got a lot of things going on with various departments in the city. Starting with benchmarking and building performance, this is an initiative to help support resource efficiency in existing buildings in the city of Lakewood. We're going to work with FEMA Grant in the coming year to conduct a climate vulnerability study. This will evaluate potential impacts of climate change on natural hazards in the communities in Lakewood. We with the new employee in the budget for zero waste, we're going to work on waste diversion and circular economy projects in the city. In conjunction with community resources, we'll be looking at renewable energy from municipal facilities, looking at financial assessments for fi final project recommendations ongoing based on new funding and incentives from federal programs. We'll be working with Public Works on electric vehicle planning. Planning process kicks off in October. We'll look at city fleet electrification, public charging at municipal facilities, citywide policies, codes and service standards. In the next slide, another big priority in two thousand and twenty three has been focusing on Lakewood's unhoused population. This includes the navigation program. In the Police Department CAT Team, we have two housing navigator, excuse me, two homeless navigators that help provide street outreach, assess needs and navigate to people to save emergency shelter, resources, and work on long term housing and supportive needs for unhoused clients. In the Planning Department, we have a housing navigator position. This is a person who works with clients who are ready to secure, stable, permanent housing by identifying units, assisting with application, budgeting, ongoing case management to ensure that our clients remain successfully housed. A priority in two thousand and twenty three has been encampment cleanup. We've started a program for that working with planning and the CAT team in the Police Department. The purpose of the encampment program is to effectively respond to and coordinate the legal removal and clearing of unhoused encampments while first providing outreach resources to camp inhabitants. We brought on in two thousand and twenty three an independent contractor to work with the CAT team to perform weekly encampment cleanups across the city. And finally, we're expanding our extreme weather sheltering program. In the immediate term, in this past year, we in February of two thousand and twenty three, we launched an extreme weather overflow shelter for the purpose of adding emergency shelter beds in addition to the severe weather shelter network. And ongoing in two thousand and twenty four and now on to the next slide, we're going to be working on the Navigation Center, providing basic needs such as food, shelter, showers, laundry, as well as housing resources, physical and behavioral health services and employment resources. So we're looking at two properties along Colfax and Fourteenth to help us meet these goals, to provide additional resources to our homeless population, sheltering both emergency and longer term and extreme weather sheltering, and then providing additional training, job training and and resources to these populations. On the next slide, an additional priority in two thousand and twenty three has been affordable housing. City Council is aware of the Lakewood Housing Study that's been completed and it's coming to you for further review in the coming month. And then just last week, Council authorized Lakewood's participation in Proposition One Two Three, which provides state funding for affordable housing access throughout the city. And we're already starting to look at programs to bring money into Lakewood for through this through this Proposition One Two Three. The final slide I have tonight is about our Small But Mighty Neighborhood Support Team. A lot of great things have come out of neighborhood support. One of the biggest has been the creation of Lakewood's Mediation Services. This is a program that has replaced a Jefferson County program that was discontinued in COVID in two thousand and twenty twenty. We've created a mediation program and in two thousand and twenty three, so far to date, we've received sixty three referrals. These referrals come from the Police Department, Planning, Community Resources, Public Works and self referrals from the community. Of those eleven have completed negotiations, eight of which reached agreement in their negotiations, and we have six mediation, current mediation scheduled in the coming months. These have been of various issues, including fences, pets, noise, business neighbor relations, property damage, et cetera. And so far, it's been an incredibly successful and and valuable program for the community. In addition, we've got a get together grant for block parties and other neighborhood gatherings. In two thousand and twenty three, we had applications for forty three events, an average of eighty eight Lakewood residents have attended each of those events across the city in all five wards, mainly block parties, but other types of neighborhood events as well. Strong positive response from our community and our participants in those events. In this past summer, we started a Neighborhood Flix program, which provides movie nights. It provides a kit to neighborhoods with everything needed to throw a neighborhood movie night and was reserved throughout every weekend in the summer of two thousand and twenty three. And then finally, we're working on volunteer events. We're currently planning neighborhood volunteer events for the late summer and early fall of this year. These will include neighborhood beautification, neighborhood well built being, and a lot of more, a lot more information to come to Council on that volunteer program and those events in the coming weeks and months. And with that update, I will turn it over to our Community Resources Director, Kit Nuland, to close off the department presentations.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Nuland. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council and everyone watching the presentation tonight. And they save the best for last, Community Resources. So thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak with you. You can move on to the next slide. And I wanted to touch quickly, as others have, on Council Goal Alignment. We are aligned very well with Goals Three, Five and Six. Beautiful and Sustainable City, and we are very involved in working on collaborative efforts with our partners across the city in sustainability, including efforts to add solar, EV chargers, turf reduction in our park system, performance contracts on city buildings, water conservation and and so on. Oh, the big one is our Tree Canopy Initiative, which was quite successful and we plan to continue to to help residents with their tree canopies on private and we'll be doing that on public land as well. And then five is the short and long term solutions for unhoused. Travis just touched on quite a bit of that. We were involved in the extreme weather shelter provision over this past winter. And we continue to work collaboratively on helping unhoused populations with short and long term solutions. And then lastly is the strong and healthy economy. Everyone knows that parks are so important to the vibrancy and the quality of life in a community. And we're really proud of the system that Lakewood has, and it always comes up high on ratings from residents about what they appreciate in the city of Lakewood. And and homes that are near park systems always have higher property values. People who spend time in parks are reported to have lower health costs as well as much better long term health and fewer chronic conditions. Next slide, please. So I'm going to touch on projects that have recently been completed. We in May, we brought the completion of our Imagine Tomorrow Master Plan for the department to you, and we've started on our implementation of that currently. Next slide, please. We recently replaced tennis courts with post tension at three parks, Westboro, Lasley and Okane. Post tension concrete will last much longer, has much longer lifetime than the current than the previous surfaces. Next slide. In July, we were very excited to finally be able to welcome residents to Peak View Park, which is on this corner. Well, the intersection basically of Wadsworth and Morrison Road. Max showed a slide of that traffic signal there. So at the park, we've completed soft and hard surface trails. And we've gotten lots of rave reviews from people who've visited the parks. We have a temporary parking lot there now. Once that intersection is completed, we'll be able to do a permanent parking lot. The great thing about this project, the construction was fully funded with one point four million in Tabor funds. Next slide is completion of the Taft Park Playground, which we finished in the fall of last year. The Bear Creek Greenbelt Trail Improvements have been ongoing for the last couple of years. This is a seven mile trail between Wadsworth and Fox Hollow Golf Course. The project included replacing and realigning concrete along the trail, installing a parallel trail. We replaced two bridges. And then the last part of this project will be adding a restroom at the trailhead at the Stone House. Excuse me, this project was made possible due to the Tabor funds that we were able to use and the amount of two point seven million. And those funds were able to be used to access two different grant grant funds, which are the Land and Water Conservation Fund and Jefferson County Open Space to complete this. We're almost finished with the trail improvements. And then we'll be doing the restroom late this year. Next slide. Excuse me. In progress right now and very slow getting to that completion point are the addition of six pickleball courts at the Carmody Recreation Facility and Park. This this facility is at twenty two hundred South Kipling. We'll be adding, well, actually, these courts are almost ready to open. There, as you can see, they've been, they need to still be lined, but they're almost finished. Six pickleball courts with lights, two little shade shelters. And we resurfaced the basketball court, which you can see in the further distance on this this slide here. This this project took a little bit longer than we had hoped due to the very wet weather in the early summer this year. Also underway, next slide, please, is the renovation of James E. Harrison Park. This park was previously called South Sims. It's at South Sims and West Virginia Avenues. The part this project was started through an NPP request grant for sixty thousand to replace the shelter. And since we were doing work at this park to replace the shelter, we needed to make some other changes, one of which is to replace the playground there, which is quite old, and we'll do some other improvements to the landscaping on this on this site. Construction is underway at that site. Next slide. The next slide is the Two Creeks Park Improvement. This this park is located right on Wadsworth between about Eleventh and Twelfth. This is a park that we've owned, the city has owned for many years. But we've finally been able to work on construction, design and construction to make improvements. We'll be working with Mile High Flood District as they need to do a lot of floodplain mitigation and gulch work while they while we're in there. So we'll be working collaboratively with them to complete the construction. That project is expected, excuse me, to start late twenty three or early twenty four. Also underway is our our improvements at Wright. Also underway is our our improvements at Wright Park, another park that's been. Within the city but has been undeveloped for many, many years. This is about a ten-acre park. This is located just south of Sixth and Wright Street. Um we had a really robust public engagement process. We got a lot of comments on Lakewood Together about what people would like. And we're excited to be able to put a active, act, some active, some passive park um amenities in this area, which is a very. Uh dense popu- densely populated area. This project also will be funded in partial, in partial with Tabor funds um of one point four million. The construction documents are now underway and construction will begin in the spring. Next slide. We just started the public engagement process for the Bear Creek Lake Park Master Plan, which is expected to go. Between about twelve to eighteen months. Um as you all know, Bear Creek Lake Park is a very popular and well-loved. Jewel in the city of Lakewood and it attracts visitors from all over the regional area. Um significant long-term infrastructures, infrastructure improvements are needed at this park. And so we expect to get recommendations for a lot of that during the conclusion of the master plan. So this is just one example of some of the infrastructure that we'll need to be addressing over the upcoming years. Next slide. At the end of twenty eighteen, we were very excited to purchase this Porter Park, which is located on Tabor Street. Uh just north of Simms Steakhouse at the intersection of Tabor and Eighth. We had a very robust public engagement process and received um approximately two hundred comments from residents. About what they'd like to see at this park and the design that we have come up with is all about what residents in the area were interested in. Um this, these construction documents are underway. And development of this, a construction of this site is expected to occur sometime next year. This project will be funded with Tabor funds. Um about a million is expected to be used at this project. And then I wanted to just touch very quickly on some of the neighborhood participation projects, which our department is currently involved in. We just completed. Two projects at um elementary schools, Slater and Green Gables. And then underway, we have multiple other projects, some at schools and some at our own park sites. But um all of those will be completed over the course of the next year. Next slide, please. Then I wanted to mention, mention some upcoming projects that we have in the Community Resources Department. Um at the Heritage Lakewood Belmar Park, we'll be implementing uh a signage plan. So you you'll, over the course of the next year. To two, you'll see new signs at that site. We'll also be doing a rehab at the Peerless Gas Station at Heritage Lakewood Belmar Park. We just started um a public art master plan, very early stages, and you all will be hearing more about that. It's been ten years since the city completed a public art master plan, so it's timely. Um we are very excited that we'll be able to add a trailhead. And a new dog park at the entrance to um the Bear Creek Greenbelt at the Wadsworth, that Wadsworth entrance. Due to the fact that we have a couple of new properties there. And um that's expected to occur sometime towards the end of next year. We hope those those, that construction will get underway. Um we are in the process of doing a renovation study at Fox Hollow at the Clubhouse. And we're involved in, our staff are involved in planning for electrical vehicle. Um adding electrical vehicle uh infrastructure across the city. And then there's a couple, three large infrastructure projects that are on the radar and in design right now. Which include the Carmody Pool and Locker Room renovations. Patterson Head Start Cottage remodel, that's a second um cottage at um. At at Patterson. And then lastly, we'll be adding a solar to the Whitlock Recreation Center. Then I wanted to just overview the acquisitions and the improvements that have been funded through Tabor. We've been able to acquire a hundred and twenty-eight point eight acres. Um to, at the cost of almost eight million dollars with Tabor funding. And then um most exciting that we are going to be bringing to City Council a proposal. On September twenty-fifth, a proposal to purchase the Denver Water Pop Property at Twentieth and Quail. Um we've come to agreement with Denver Water for five million dollars if indeed City Council agrees to that on September twenty-fifth. And that property is about nine point eight acres. It was previously owned by um the YMCA and then Denver Water bought it. And we know that Lakewood residents um have wanted this property within the city's system for quite some time, so we're excited about that. Um and then we've spent about three point five million in total park improvements, including the Greenbelt improvements and Peak View Park. And as I've mentioned, we have many other Tabor-funded improvements um coming up in the next year. On this slide, you can see a list of the properties that we've purchased since twenty eighteen. The top property, the Peak View Park. Um property was not purchased with Tabor funds, but the, all the others were. We've added, with these properties, we've added a hundred and eighty-three and a half acres to the park system and then with the additional, almost ten acres. And we're getting very close to two hundred additional acres um since twenty eighteen. So we're very excited about that. We also want everyone to be aware that. Adding all these properties will add costs over the long haul. To these, all these properties need maintenance to different levels and different degrees. And we've done an estimate based on what we think these sites will be. And we've come up with about two hundred thousand dollars annually in addition, in additional cost to maintain these, these properties. Next slide, please. Our, our department is responsible for other, other, other city buildings outside of Community Resources. So I wanted to mention some of the large. Infrastructure improvement projects that we have um taken on over the course of the last year. This or about June or July, we completed a substation renovation um at the Star Center. For the Patrol Division of the Police Department, which is right along Colfax at Yarrow. So they have a new substation there at the Star Center, which will be extremely helpful for their staff who are. Um patrolling in that, that area of town. We also added Sallyport Doors at the Public Safety Center. Those are the big garage doors on the lower level. Um those doors completely failed earlier this year and have now been replaced. We've replaced the fleet car wash. We um added uh elevator modernization at the Civic Center Complex. We added an emergency radio system. Um and the big project that we're currently working on is the Quail Shop uh wall. The big wall that held the power for the snowplows completely failed and is currently being replaced. We do expect that project to be completed in time for the first snowfall. We've also will be next year adding security fencing around the entire Quail Shop facility due to vandalism. Um and theft at that facility. We're replacing the fluid room for fleet and adding backup generators. And if you see work happening in the parking garage, that is a fire sprinkler safety system replacement. Next slide, please. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that in, earlier this year, we were able to complete a facility condition assessment. So that we can start looking carefully at the infrastructure within all of our buildings and understand. When um systems need to be replaced or when a building has reached its, the end of its life. Um so we, we first looked at sixteen of the largest, most heavily used facilities and we're continuing to add other facilities to that list. Um I wanted to highlight these areas that we're looking at um for what do we need to do in the next few years? The Bear Creek Lake Park Study is underway, the master plan is underway, and we know there'll be some recommendations from that. About in, in infrastructure investments that need to be made. Uh luckily, the Civic Center buildings are in good condition and we do not expect to have to do much with those for many years. Our Head Start facilities, some of them are old. Um and we need to look at how we can operate those facilities more efficiently. We also are struggling with staffing issues. In Head Start, so that's an area that we'll be looking at carefully. As Max mentioned, we are looking at maintenance facilities and hopefully we'll be able to add some new space. For some of that facility so that we can improve the areas that they're currently using. Um we'll be looking at um parks, pools, and um uh open space operations as well. And looking at how we might be able to condense or operate more efficiently. Same with public safety facilities. There are five facilities now. And we want to look at if there's efficiency opportunities there. And again, same thing with the recreation centers. We'll be looking at those next year. Um where we have heavier usage, where we might be able to um become more efficient, potentially. Moving programs and facilities or and or um closure of some facilities as well. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'd like to turn it over to Holly, our CFO.
Great. Thank you very much. Nicely done.
Okay, uh so this is the end of our presentation for the city budget. The next meeting on the budget will be September twenty-eighth. With the Budget Audit Board, then um. Uh October ninth will be the first public hearing and October twenty-third, sorry, I said the wrong date. September nineteenth is when we're having it, so tomorrow night. Um. And then October ninth will be the first public hearing and October twenty-third will be the second public hearing. But before I turn it over back to uh Mayor Paul uh for questions and discussion, I wanted to give thanks and introduction to the Budget Audit Board members. From the City Council, we have Counselor Stewart, uh Counselor Strong, Counselor Vincent. And the citizen members are David Engel, uh Deborah Hensmark. And we have one vacant position, which used to be Mar- uh Marlon McDaniel. Um thank you for your insight and discussion on the city finances. Um and Mayor Paul, I believe that Counselor Stewart, as the Chair of the Budget and Audit Board, would like to make some comments.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. Counselor Stewart, go ahead.
Sure, uh thanks, Mayor Paul. I just wanted to uh briefly um emphasize. Uh the Budget and Audit Board's role um in this process. So our role in general is to provide financial oversight on the financial statements, budget forecasts, and general spending policies. We are a unique board because we're made up of three council members and three citizen members. And um last year, just to emphasize the kind of calendar that we're operating under, we tried out a new process last year of having. The Budget and Audit Board's study session following the council's study session. So that we could take council comments, questions, concerns, and recommendations into consideration at our own study session. And then bring forward our formal recommendations as a board um back to council at the October ninth uh first public hearing. So the board found that that process was beneficial and made a. Uh decision to follow that protocol again this year. So we will, we're all here, we're listening in. Um our citizen members are here in attendance as well. So that the council discussion tonight can further inform our own study session tomorrow and spur a more robust conversation. And um hopefully recommendations that are also well in alignment with um council's questions and recommendations tonight. Um I do want to just acknowledge our citizen members again for being here, Deb Hensmark and David Engel. And I do want to thank um our previous member, Marlon McDaniel, for his service. Um he did have to step off early before um this budget process was over, but he has been with us until up. Up to about a month ago and has been really um integral in this process this last year. So I did want to um acknowledge him uh as well. So I think that's kind of all that I've got tonight. We'll have some more highlights and recommendations um at the first public hearing. But thank you again to Holly and Shane and staff and everyone for putting this together. We do deeply appreciate you and know how much of a process this, this is. So thank you on behalf of the board.
Thanks, Chair Stewart. Appreciate that. And Ms. Bjorklund, did you want to? Um before we go to the open questions, did you want to cover some of the ones that came in from council up until now?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
So I sent out uh what questions we've received and the answers earlier today, but I wanted to go through those questions this evening. So um the first two questions that we had is from um Counselor Jansen. And um it was asking, how can we access the information on um uh virtually? So it is posted on the finance website, which is, the link to that is in the document. Uh that I sent you and then also on Lakewood Speaks, it has that same uh link. So you can access it either place. Next, we had uh the uh resident Budget and Audit Board Member, David Engel. And Counselor uh Mary Jansen had asked the same question. Um Counselor Jansen uh worded it a little differently, but um using David Engel's uh question. How are the city property uh taxes are, how are they only going up eleven percent? But I hear that overall property taxes are going up thirty to forty percents. Still trying to reconcile this discrepancy. And the answer to that is the proposed budget, we don't get the um property tax estimates until after the budget book is complete. We received the final uh valuation from the assessor in December. And we made adjustments in the revised budget process. Part of the reason why we do that is there's also other changes that happen in revenue. So we want to make sure we're encompassing everything in that um update. Uh the next one is the resident uh Budget and Audit Board Member, uh Deborah Hensmark. Uh had asked um a few questions as well as made some comments. On page nine, where is the five-year capital improvement and preservation plan? It might be nice to identify where this can be found for anyone curious enough to go look at it. In fact, you talk a lot about the five-year plan throughout the document. You, please tell the reader where it can be found. You might also add to the appendix listing that the schedule. Schedules are for twenty twenty-four only. Um so staff will be looking at these recommendations for changes for the final book. We do get recommendations from. Multiple areas and we try to evaluate what um what's the best changes to make. So uh the next one is page twenty-three, where the fourteen million for Colfax coming from and when? I can't find it on the list of the capital purchases. The fourteen million, oh, the answer is the fourteen million is being contributed from the Tabor and Capital Improvement Fund. The capital purchase list has the total dollar amount associated with the contract on page three hundred and eighteen. Colfax pedestrian, safety, and infrastructure project. Uh the next item is page twenty-six. The question is states uh that, page twenty-six states that. Reserves will be spent to loan funds to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund for North Drive Gulch Floodplain Mitigation Project. We have moved away, have we moved away from the possibility of a bond financing? The answer, no bond is still being considered for particular funding of this project. We are pursuing both options in parallel to make sure we make the best choice for the taxpayer. Um the next question is uh page forty-two, discussion of supplemental budget. Have there been supplemental budgets appropriated this year? Answer. There have been supplemented, supplemental appropriations for grants that have come up during the year. And the revised twenty twenty-three budget is utilized to accommodate most of the adjustments that we make to the budget. Next question is a page forty-four, what is ballot question two A, the average reader needs a more. Uh explanatory statement there. Page forty-nine, you state that the voters allow the city to retain. Is this not a good place to describe the entire ballot question spending requirements? So again, we'll look at um uh expanding on that to explain what those two items are in the final version. The next question, page fifty-nine, in the budget overview, the thing that stands out is that the Planning Department budget is going. Uh to triple. Why? In detail, it looks like capital outlay is the reason, but in the appendix, I don't find enough purchases. To triple the expenditures. Help. Um the answer is the Colfax Pedestrian and Safety Project is a joint, joint project between. between planning and public works. It is a um, it's in planning's budget and the main driver of uh for this increase. Public Works is going to be uh managing and uh the construction of the projects. So uh it was included in the Public Works capital purchase list. So it's in there, it's just in uh both departments because of that joint project. Page three oh four, Sheraton uh Sidewalk and Wadsworth Boulevard says that design work will begin in twenty twenty-three, did it? And construction is anticipated in twenty twenty-five. Why the delay? Answer, design work has been uh in twenty twenty-three for both projects. Construction is anticipated to begin in twenty twenty-five due to the amount of time to complete a final design and acquire the property right rights needed. Now moving on to Counselor um Sharazai's uh questions. On page seventy, with the government grant listing, why is the RACE grant not included for the Sixth and Wad- Wadsworth Exchange? I thought that was funded uh to us and not CDOT. Answer, this grant was awarded to the city of, well, Lakewood, oh, city of Lakewood. And during the award process, it was determined that the grant should go directly to CDOT as it will be managing the entire project. Um. On page uh, the next question, on page two seventy-three, interdepartmental fleet electrification is listed as a goal, and I wonder if this includes investments by community resources to electrify the lawn equipment? Answer, yes, this does include lawn equipment. This will require investment in charging infrastructure throughout the city of Lakewood Maintenance Facilities. Next question, page two fifty-three, on the three additional FTEs for planning are ju- uh distributed how? How many are meant to increase the staffing for the Sustainability Division? Planning has requested a grant rider, and one of those focuses will be sustainability grants, a zero-waste sustainability planner to support the continued efforts of the Sustainability Division, and a homeless services coordinator to support the unhoused population. There is another sustainability position that was placed in non-departmental. When this position's responsibilities are finalized, the TART department will be determined. On page two fifty-three, so next question, on page two fifty-three, CIPP uh Line Bridge Project, projected lights, Line Bridge projected lights on Sixth Ave is listed. I'm overjoyed by this. Is there an increased level of commitment from RTD to accomplish this in twenty twenty-four, given Lakewood's projected financial commitment? We have not uh restarted any discussion with RTD concerning this project, sorry, this is the answer. We have not restarted any discussion with RTD concerning this project, but we will do so if the budget is approved. Next question, page three thirty-one, the new mental health coresponder shows a total of three FTEs. I wanted to understand where members of the CAT team are in the staffing budget and what will be the total number of civilian staff positions in twenty twenty-four if all funded positions are hired to support the work with patrol officers, non-admin positions. The CAT team employees are housed in the Patrol Services Division of the Police Department. The total number of civilian employees in the Police Department will be a hundred and twenty point six employees. The total number of sworn employees for twenty twenty-four proposed budget is two hundred and seventy-three. If you want more uh information on how the breakout is of the um non-sworn employees, because you had mentioned non-administrative positions, um, I need to understand how you're defining what your, what bucket you're actually looking for.
Yeah.
And that's the end of the um questions that were uh submitted um uh in writing.
Great. All right, well, let's just keep rolling into council questions from here. So Counselor Jansen, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Holly, for all your hard work. Um, but I did have a question that I don't, I don't understand why I I, there's something that I wasn't sure. And it's in the budget book on page one thirty-eight, says that property tax revenues are anticipated to increase in twenty twenty-four over twenty twenty-three by ten percent. But in the budget book, page sixty-two to sixty-three shows that the property taxes are fourteen uh fourteen million, five hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight, a nine point nine percent change. And the forecasted twenty by twenty twenty-four property assessed valuations are three billion, twenty-three million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and seventeen, that's a ten point ninety, point ten point nine one cha- percent change. So um I looked at the county assessor and he published the twenty twenty-three preliminary value reporting and reports, and the taxable assessed value was three billion, five hundred and thirty million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one. And the city reduces that uh by the tip areas and the new construction, so the net value is three billion, three hundred and sixty-six million, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven, lots of numbers. So um I'm I'm, I I did the math and I came up that it was twenty-four point twenty-six percent, uh twenty-four point two-six percent difference. And so I want to know how, I mean, that's quite a big jump. So how how can we, how can we, you know, I was talking about mill levy reductions, and I was wondering how can we we do this with with this this difference?
Uh, so first, I'd like to clarify that the city does not take out the LRA piece um when we do our calculation. Uh, and the difference is that we do an assessment of what the property tax will be prior to the issuing of uh the assessor's preliminary estimates. So our budget book is complete before they send out that letter. We don't get the final one from the assessor until December. So um we don't, uh, we've already finalized the budget at that point. So the process the city goes through is to revise the property uh revenue in the revised budget. So for example, for twenty twenty-three, what, that's what we're proposing in terms of revising our revenue. If there was a change in property tax, which this is the off year, so it wouldn't be a significant change, um, we would propose that change at that time. It helps to be able to provide all the revenue changes at once for City Council to be able to have a comprehensive look at what's changing in the revenue.
So if we were to do a mill levy reduction, um, we'd have to do that within the next couple meetings?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Because we have to provide the mill levy to the county.
And and due to time, I do, I did make a proposal for a mill mill levy reduction, and I did post it, I did send everybody that. Does everyone get that? Hello? Okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
Hey, other questions? Okay. Well, I think as, oh, yep, Counselor Matt Guerrero, go ahead.
Um, my question is um a little bit more uh in just me taking advantage of the the broad discussion we get to have about all of our departments this time. And so in particular, I was wondering, I think it mostly fits under planning, but it might be another team just because it's like one of those things that lives everywhere, as we saw a lot of tonight, which I really appreciated. And this was a great presentation, so thanks to everybody who put it together. Um, and it was really about cleaning up uh homeless camps and just have we done any like thinking about the amount of money that that's costing us versus trying to create other types of solutions to the issue? So of course, moving homeless folks place to place, we know when there's not anywhere for them to go, which like we're obviously working on those solutions, and I really appreciate that. Um, it can be very expensive, which we can see in the budget. And so some places have also decided to, you know, reduce some of their like sweeping budget and added to some of their like permanent infrastructure budget to save money over time, like additional like trash and sanitation workers, um, storage places for people to be able to um store their items for much cheaper, so that then you can kind of just reduce how much people are carrying things around and things of of that kind of, uh particularly as, of course, I know that we are deliberately working to create more both emergency and long-term solutions for housing. And I was wondering if that was a part of the budget discussion at all?
Uh, Travis, did you, uh, Mr. Parker, did you want to answer that question?
Absolutely. Yes, we're we're definitely looking at all of that. It's a very holistic approach that we're trying to take with our unhoused population. We're not just looking at camp cleanup, but when we go to a camp cleanup, we make sure and provide resources and housing solutions as well. And you saw in my presentation, that's a big part of our focus as a city, as a department, is building our affordable housing portfolio, building our sheltering portfolio, building our resource provision services. So we're looking at this holistically, and yeah, camp cleanup is a very small piece of this and is is part of the larger puzzle.
Okay, thank you. And then my other uh question is sort of in the same vein, but I think probably specifically for the Police Department, if the chief is still here. Um, which is uh in some of the uh increased uh staffing for like community so resource type positions, which I was really thrilled to see, frankly, I'm really like pleased with some of the bigger changes that we're seeing in this budget compared to the last couple. And I'm, I just want to like really commend everybody's participation on that. Um, is this, is there any talk about expanding the hours or like what the money it would be to expand the hours of the CAT team and of the like alternative responders or the co-responders? Just given that I know that I end up definitely having emails from folks on, say, a Sunday, or if it's a long weekend, um, of folks saying, you know, I've been trying to get this issue addressed, and I'm being told that, you know, the CAT team just doesn't work until this time, but this is an increasingly urgent issue. And I, of course, always encourage folks that whether a person is housed or unhoused, committing an actual crime, right, like public drug use or theft or harassment are all actually crimes that you can report to any police. But I think that there'd been both a little community confusion about those roles, but then also a real need to be able to access those kinds of resources more of the time. And I I'm wondering, I I recognize that in this budget, we probably wouldn't be able to scale up to the place that we would want to. I'm wondering if we have a sense of what that would look like.
Would you like me to answer? Um, you're you're absolutely correct. The currently, the CAT team and our co-responders operate on a Monday through Friday type of schedule, but uh we're police officers, we operate twenty-four seven, and we're never gonna decline the opportunity to do our job because we do it for one reason only, and that's the calling. But um to answer your question directly, I am exploring ways to expand services from that particular uh group, which includes our civilians as well. Um, our police department's very um, very well, you you probably understand, we're very well-trained, and they're progressive, and I've I've seen, I've witnessed how they treat people out there, and it's like law enforcement has changed so much since I was a a pup in the eighties. But um they'll, they will be coddled or taken care of or referred after hours, and then our CAT team will pick it up during the normal hours as it stands now. And most of the time, the um, you're not dealing with a lot of their of activities with the unhoused population after hours. They are pretty much settling down too. They're mostly active during the day. That's when we remove the camps, when we can get in to remove the camps or discuss things with them. But what I, what I'm really interested in is expanding the um services such as mental health, evaluating, stuff like that. And I I think sometimes making that type of thing wait overnight is not effective. So that's what we're really looking at right now. And that is, we're, we're moving forward right now to expand our co-responder program, and we're gonna snatch this one right from out from underneath everybody else in the area. We're gonna be ahead of everyone, we're gonna have our own co-responder program. And um keep an eye on it, because it's coming, it's in place.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Counselor. Guys noticed I jumped in a phone booth.
We'll go to Counselor Stewart, then I'll go to Counselor Jansen.
I just want to pick up on that same uh question, Chief Smith. So it sounds like that is something that we may want to be expanding and working on in twenty twenty-four is what I'm hoping. So I'm just curious, where um is there? A a couple of years ago in the budget, we had some um unallocated FTEs, which it does not look like we necessarily have this year. So I'm just kind of curious how that shifting in allocation is potentially going to work in your department? Is there a a plan for money in the budget for that this year? Are you going to need to come to us for a supplemental um allocation at some point in time? Um, or is there some shifting we need to do in this current budget to make sure that you have the um flexibility and resources? You need to potentially make that happen within whatever timeline um we possibly can.
You know, I really appreciate you asking this line of question, and I hate to take up time. Um, but what the plan is, uh through the management with the city, I mean, this isn't a blindside operation. This isn't, we're not operating just out of the Police Department, this is with city management as well. I want to add co-responders to this year, and I want to check and evaluate their activities, their contacts. Then I'd like to move to two for next year, and I'd like to move for two for the year after that. And then I think we have a very sustainable, recognizable program. However, I want to check it step by step. I want to make sure, anybody that works in my organization is going to be data-driven, it's going to be numbers-driven. And to answer your question about the budget, I have, we have unused salary positions that have been consistent for years. And I don't think it's fair to the taxpayer, and I don't think it's fair to the community a- as far as with our service level to not utilize those funds. And if I can get um alternative sources to assist the public, I'm going after it. And with, of course, the permission of the council and my management. But anyways, um, that's what we're looking at. We, it's, those positions aren't going to impact the budget right now because those positions, their salaries are built into the budget already. Um, when it comes to the point where we can turn around and start getting more um sworn officers or sworn agents, maybe I'll come back to the city, but what I'm really hoping is, I'm hoping we address some of these problems and we drop the call volume, because that's the under and and other end of the equation. Either drop your call volume, or you get your, you get your personnel to cover the calls. So there's, it's one, it's either end of the seesaw, and I'm gonna go with right now what we can do. We can't get the the uniformed agents because the pool is very small and we're competing with everybody. So I'm gonna go a different route. We're gonna try and cut down on those hours and try and cut down those calls for service by addressing problems before they happen. And that's, that's what the co-responder program is about.
So just to clarify, you have what you need to make that happen in this budget?
I don't think my manager would have allowed me to go forward if we didn't.
Okay.
Hey, Counselor Jansen.
Okay, thanks, I'm back. Um, so I I have another question for Holly, and it's on the Creek side, uh, the Walmart. Um, hmm, uh, so it it looks like it ends next year, right? On August ninth or August of two thousand twenty-four, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so um, and I I saw these amounts, the one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and six, and then there was a four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and six. So did they get, are they getting reimbursed for the one million, four hundred and eighty- did they get, are they getting reimbursed for the 1,482,206 or 482,206?
The 1,004.
1,004. And then, is that for here?
It, and actually those questions are going to be um, provided by uh, Mr. Smith during the LRA presentation. So all the questions you sent on the LRA are included.
All right, I just, I, it's also a regular budget concern, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you knew that, that we did answer them.
Okay. All right, I didn't see it, but thank you.
Hey, counsel, anything else at this point? Okay, well, fantastic. Nice, nicely done to, to all involved and certainly our, our uh, citizen members as well. Um, there'll be a meeting tomorrow night to continue this conversation. Then of course, we'll have uh, a little bit over a month to continue to go through this for the community. It's posted. So I'd encourage the community as well as council to get out there, give the feedback, get those questions into Holly and her team. They do a wonderful job. Especially when you're talking about seven, eight, nine-digit numbers. Those things can be helpful to, to come in a question format so they have some time to work it through. So if there's nothing else for this meeting, we're gonna adjourn. Quick question, clerical question, Mr. Robber, do we have to close out and come back in?
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor. Everyone can sit tight. Bernie will just end the recording. And then um, start a new recording for the LRA and then switch people back and forth. Um, I know our LRA commissioners are here.
Yeah, I think the commissioners are here. We're lining up. I'll let the public know that we're just gonna take a quick break. We'll adjourn this study session at 7:52 PM. And we will re uh, rejoin here in a little bit or just stay on and, and we'll kick off the next, the other meeting.